I want to call this August, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'll let y'all know that. We'll call this August ninth, twenty twenty three made into order. Sheriff Bradley, would you like the lead is in fled?
Nobody can.
Legally required of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry, commissioners. Mr. Stotter, you want to, uh, if you want to do the deputy.
Sheriff, I know you want had a few words to say first.
This letter from Commissioner, I gave y'all a copy, um, Corporal Pearson's on July thirty first, he was in the sixty one area. Uh, Pet County driving up the road, observe, where'd you go in more detail, observe the vehicle that flames coming underneath of it. Long and short for Bishop or pizza. Um, about this young man, say, and I get, this is what it's all about, he saved two lives and two dogs' lives. Um, because he quit, her quick, courageous accident, he took, went above beyond call of duty. I wish there was more we could do, but me, Sheriff's work were excellent for what you did and I appreciate and I hope you, hey, I will. Um, I think I gave it to Commissioner, she's going to read a bit more about it and what all went on, but I appreciate.
Well, I have to say, this doesn't surprise me knowing you, I mean, impressive, and this is how our deputies are here, they don't hesitate to rush into danger and dangerous situations to help. Others, and in this case, you saved four lives. I mean, he saw flames coming out of this car, turned around, followed her, she lost control of the car, goes over the mountain, did it go over the mountain or just turn over outside? Bank and flip, so she's upside down, you save her and realize there's a child in the car, save the child and then save two dogs on top of that. I mean, it's amazing, and anytime that car could have gone up, I mean, and you went back three times. You know, after going in the first time, so, um, I'm really proud of you, I know my colleagues are proud of you, and this county is proud to have you, I mean, way to go, man. And thank you to all the deputies came in to support him.
All right.
Y'all take care.
Mr. Youngs?
Good morning.
Morning.
All right, I got plenty of ground, there's property. This is a refund, uh, due to that exoneration, that guy was supposed to have military exemption on the vehicle.
What is that?
If you're stationed, uh, out of state or out of country and you. Have your vehicle with you and, uh, the example one, one of one vehicles.
Oh, nice.
Was the only.
All right, well, I move that we approve the exemption and the refund.
Second. On favor. I'll make a motion to approve the real property exonerations presented this one, second, on favor. I make a motion to approve payroll through eight eleven.
Second.
On favor. That's it, ready?
You want to see any of the connotations?
I don't, it doesn't.
I usually like to look at them. Make sure there's nothing too complicated in there. All right, I move we approve the. Patients to combine land here.
Second.
Divide land.
It's both, yeah.
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 All in favor. I mean, a move of four and my. As commissioners, check the, uh, vouchers invoices out, have any questions? Gee, is there anything that we should be concerned with?
Yeah.
I don't know.
I'm here, sorry.
Is there any concerns that you had on the vouchers and invoices?
No, there's not.
Yeah, I figured we would have heard about it about.
Yeah. A motion to approve vouchers and invoices. All in favor. Prior minutes. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for July twenty six. Second, all favor.
Keep one of the sonder in this way out and then what it is.
All right, I move we approve the estate settlements.
Second, all favor. Ruth? What's on there?
You are all. Okay, the first is a request from New Haven PSD to renewing Charles Andrew Small, term expired July thirty third, twenty twenty nine.
Don't you have anybody come in? No, I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve Charles Small for term expiration of July thirty first, twenty twenty nine for New Haven PSD.
Second.
All favor.
Get ready, yeah, so next is the region for request for Fed County Gig Ready Round Two broadband application consideration.
Good morning, I'm here. So we have the Gig Ready application, it is pretty much done, we've been working with GigaBeam to make sure that everything is going to fall into place. So basically, this application is going to serve about fifteen hundred targeted passings, which is targeted addresses. Over about a hundred and twenty-two miles. The total cost of this project is going to be about, from Gig Ready, we're going to ask about ten million, eight hundred and eighty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars and twenty-nine cents, we'll probably round that up to the nearest dollar. Fayette County has committed their ARPA funds of four million dollars and GigaBeam has committed five hundred thousand. Towards match from, for their portion as well, and that's going to be provided throughout the two-year construction period from GigaBeam. Are there any questions? I'll be happy to try to, to help answer any questions.
Yeah, when, when this has to be put in today?
August seventeenth, so we have, but it's, the deadline is, is coming up quickly.
So. So is this a, is this a match, this fourth, four million?
Yes.
I didn't think the match was supposed to be that high.
Twenty-five percent.
Of ten million?
I think it's a total of thirteen million. Amanda?
Yes, yes, that is, that's the correct match, so we will make sure.
Oh, I see, okay, cumulative, I thought, when you said the ten million figure, I thought the four million was a percentage of it.
No, no, so the ten million is what we're going to ask from Gig Ready, and really, it's closer to eleven million than ten million, but that's what we're going to ask from Gig Ready.
And refresh me again, which area will this expansion cover?
So it's going to go, it's going to go right down, uh, Route nineteen is, is my understanding. And they're going to pick up as many targeted addresses as they possibly can, I don't think that they can go all the way across the bridge. I don't think that that's, that's going to be within the budget, but it's going to cover the vast majority of Fayette County.
What part again, uh, Amanda?
So it's going to go right through Route nineteen and. Well, so right through, and I can send you guys a map if that's.
Yeah, yeah, please.
If that's helpful, yeah, I'll send you a map to show you, but it goes through the heart of Fayette County. And they do pick up, um, various other ancillary areas that GigaBeam is going to go out on their own and try to grab those. They did say that to go across the bridge, the New River Gorge Bridge, didn't seem to be, it was going to fit in the budget. And doesn't mean that the, that's not possible in the future, it just means that it was, it wasn't as, as feasible.
Uh, they were sixty.
Yeah, I mean, our.
I thought we were doing Route sixty.
Our priority was Route sixteen and Route sixty.
It is, I apologize, that's, that's what it is.
Okay.
Yes, so the project area that was discussed in the preliminary meeting is the same project area that this application is going to cover, nothing has, nothing has changed in that regard.
Okay, so we're talking that side of the bridge, not this, not the Fayetteville side of the bridge.
Correct, correct.
Amanda, this, this has to be filed by, signed and filed by the seventeen?
Yes, so what we need from the commission is basically just an approval, everything is online, it's on a, a portal. So the application will be submitted online, we just need the commission to approve the application formally. There's not any documents that the commission has to sign, there is one resolution that we provided. That will include with the application that if the commission chooses to move forward, we'll include that in there. Um, but it's not like an ARC or a CDB application where you have to sign multiple different pages, this one will just be submitted within the, the Gig Ready portal. The Zoom grants portal and, um. That's how this.
In commission, I, I'll get the sign, but, uh, talk about adjusting the, uh, the deposit from the commission and GigaBeam.
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we can have, we can absolutely have some discussions on that, and I think those were just set on what the commission was comfortable with at the time and what GigaBeam was comfortable with at the time based on the project scope.
If you remember the first one that we, we filed, we wanted GigaBeam and the commission together, but there was never any specifics about how much would come from either one. And I think, I think there was some discussion between the commissioners that we didn't want to put everything up, uh, in, in part of that. You know, in the, uh.
Yeah, I wondered where the, where the figures came from, I mean, just because we've allocated a certain amount for broadband in general, doesn't mean we want to allocate the bulk of it for the first phase of the project.
And I think GigaBeam in the very beginning talked about producing more than what he said on that.
Okay, yeah, we can absolutely have that conversation, I think where those numbers came from is.
Yeah, because I didn't.
Yeah, but I feel like we do have to vote, um, to, on what we're going to allocate, because we haven't.
Well, we can do that before the seventeen.
Yeah, we've said in, yeah, we've said in general terms what we were going to allocate, but we haven't said.
Right. And we can do a special meeting on Zoom, I mean, I'd like to have a discussion with him to.
I agree with you.
Yeah, definitely.
Amanda, would you mind setting that up?
Sure, absolutely, yeah, we'll take care of that and send everything to you.
So we can do the approval for this during that same special meeting, isn't that right?
Yeah, yeah, as long as it's posted.
Um, do we want to go ahead and set this?
I, I would, I've said it before. Doesn't matter to me, whatever, or be all day, kind of thing. How, how long do we have to before we can post it, Ruth?
You need a couple of days, cheer out Monday and Tuesday.
Yeah, but if it's Zoom, I mean, I, I mean, we set a time in Zoom, I, I need my agenda for that too, just so I know. It won't take long to do it.
Well, we can do it on the sixteenth, too, that way I wouldn't disrupt your conference. I'm open, we can do it whenever, I'm, I'm open all three days.
I got Mountain River at ten o'clock, I guess I need to do that.
Want to do it at nine?
They canceled the Mountain River.
Okay, well, then I'm good anytime that on Wednesday. Well, they didn't cancel the river, they may have canceled the meeting.
Is that what I said?
Yeah, they canceled the. Say, what, what time do y'all want to do it?
Two at nine, get it over with.
Tell me and I'll be there.
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock by Zoom. Okay, so I move we postpone this item till. Probably sixteenth at nine o'clock.
Second, all favor.
So we can, with this enough notice that we don't have to advertise a special meeting, we can just advertise it as a regular. Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you.
Fifteen after, do you want to go to? Kevin?
Good morning.
Good morning.
So you guys have talked about it, United Way donation.
Right, we, we were concerned about, um, the flood victims in the valley, um, Scrabble Creek, Smithers Creek, Canton Hall and Smithers, um, that. Did not receive assistance from the funds collected on their behalf, um, and. I raised the idea of donating some funds to assist those folks nearly a year later. Since those other funds fell through. And we were exploring using the United Way as an organization to administer, um, giving out the funds, so. Kevin, you were going to research what some of the criteria might be that, that we could use. Or guidance that we could give the United Way for distribution of the funds?
So, yeah, so United Way would be our fiduciary agency, which would, of course, hold our funds until. Uh, those individuals who need assistance go through the case management process. Uh, the case managers would be provided at no cost to us through the voluntary organizations active in the disaster, which is VOAD. Spoke to their executive director yesterday, uh, they do all of the case management for all of the flood victims and disaster, disaster victims that happens in West Virginia. They're currently right now working with disaster management in the city of Bluefield from the last big storm. So they're more than willing to work with us to provide case managers for anybody who may have, uh, unmet needs within the Valley District. Uh, from the summer flood of last year. Uh, there'd be a process to go through, they fill out the paperwork, the application, VOAD would work with them. If there's items that they need, that they may have in their warehouse, they would go ahead and supply those. And if it's something that meets the need that they do not have, they would then push that up to the long-term recovery committee. Which would then come to me, and then we'd have to appoint four people to review the case, and as long as we agree upon it. We send the request to United Way, United Way will then pay for that item, and the caseworker will have it picked up, delivered and installed. Whatever it may be to that individual.
So this is, this question is a little out there, but if, if things, you know, since we're a year, you know. Behind in the game now, um, because we thought those other funds were going to be allocated to those folks. It, are people who already had to put out money that they probably couldn't afford for unmet needs within the last year. Qualify for reimbursement if, if their insurance didn't cover it?
Ma'am, I could not answer that one hundred percent, but I will get us an answer.
Okay, because I mean, I feel like, like HVAC units, I know something that you mentioned to me, and I know. Of at least one citizen of Smithers who is going to have to replace his after several attempts to repair it.
Yes.
Year, um, but I'm sure there are others, because he was right on that street where the water went down into the.
Yes, ma'am, there are several individuals that did have to replace their HVAC system. And I, I, I personally think, and this is just from me with previous experience, if they. Can produce the documentation to show that they replaced it, they expended the funds and they have all the proper documentation, I don't see it as an issue, but that's. Higher than my pay grade, and I'll push that on up the ladder to see.
Well, I, you know, if we're going to turn over the management of the funds to, to VOAD and, um. And United Way, I feel like we need to be able to give some guidance, I mean, I would like those people to be able to qualify for reimbursement if the people who have the current need. Unmet needs are met, you know, then the people who had to put out money like that.
I think, um, if the commission themselves are putting the money towards that, then that should be a guidance or a recommendation. Of the commission themselves, that if they are able to produce this documentation, then they be forwarded the, uh, the reimbursement.
And I think, like, when you start having HVAC units, that is not cheap, so I think you might have to consider like a percentage reimbursement instead of a full reimbursement, because you. Do two or three HVAC units.
Right, eight thousand dollars.
Yeah, like you, your money doesn't go as far, you see what I'm saying? Like, I think you have to consider a percentage.
That's a good point.
Well, I think we can allocate the money and then come up with the, uh, percentages and, and, uh, the way it should be allocated.
Cause I think we can allocate it, and then before we hand it over.
Yeah.
We need to get the answers to our questions, but Kevin, if you could get those answers to Ruth and you guys work out. Some got, recommended guidance for us, we can.
Absolutely, we can do that.
Look at those, um.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to allocate forty thousand dollars. Second. All favor. They could use it.
That was, that was close to what I was going to.
Well, I figured I better go ahead and do it or use.
Or I was going to.
Yeah.
You were right.
All right, yeah, I have the discussion. So the. Okay, then next is a region for CDBG, it's the grant related to the Armstrong PSD Palton water tank project grant amendment. And I think, I'm sure Leslie. Is still on there.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The purpose of Grant Amendment Number Two is to modify the period of performance to allow more time for project completion. The period of performance for the original grant has expired, so in order to keep the Palton Tank Project moving forward. We have to extend the period of performance. The West Virginia Department of Economic Development is suggesting an amended period of performance to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. And given that the Palton Tank Project is currently out for bid with bids opening the first week of September, that's a reasonable, um, amended period of performance.
Leslie, can you clarify for me, what, what are the implications now that the PSC has had the hearing about that PSD? And West Virginia American Water, it's under emergency order or something, right?
It is under, um, approved, the, the last entry in the PSC case was joint request for approval of an interim. Emergency O and M agreement between the PSD and American Water.
So what are the implications for this project, given that action?
The Palton, the Palton Tank Project is still going forward because it is a. An urgent need in that area, um, the thought process behind going ahead with the grant was to ask. West Virginia American Water to repay it if they ultimately end up with the system.
Okay, well, I, I move that we approve the extension.
Second, all favor.
Thank you, Leslie.
Thank you, have a great day.
You too.
You too.
Okay, the next thing is. Wastewater Treatment System Service Contract for the animal shelter, so you all know we need a new septic system down there. In order to get it approved, it has to have a maintenance contract, which Wes reviewed this and said he did not send. And I think that's all the state is waiting on to move forward so we can get that. But some of we approve.
Second, all favor.
All right, the next thing was vehicle purchases, we, we allocated money in the budget for vehicle purchases and I gave y'all a list of the ones.
Well, I think.
The top needs at this point, but I feel like those won't be all of them.
I think we definitely need to do, uh, two law enforcement deputy vehicles.
And then what did we resolve? So the DRC needs another van.
Yeah, so the, the smaller van they have is the old transport van, and they need a larger van on top of trees, so she actually.
Yeah.
Um, and it's fairly reasonable, and I do have an idea for the old van.
Okay.
Yes.
Oh, I'll tell you all about later, but it's not. And then the animal control truck is like, once last, like, I talked to Gary this morning, he said he's in very few weeks about five quarts of oil. Some miles on that vehicle, so.
Yeah. It was, uh, rode hard before she received it, too.
Do we have estimates on the cost of all these?
Yeah. Like, I think. There's plenty of money in there, um, I think the van Teresa found was like forty or less, maybe, she sent me a picture. I planted on my dad.
And we know what the.
Yeah, they're about forty-eight, uh, you can get a Tahoe for about a thousand dollars more than you get in the store, personal opinion, I would go for the Tahoe, it's a nicer vehicle and has a bigger motor. So it's not as far whenever.
They're pursuing.
Right.
And then, so we're going to get a two law enforcement.
Right.
Animal control truck, is that what we talked about?
Yes, a DRC van, and then last year, you guys allocated, I think, sixty thousand dollars for nine-one-one vehicles, they only spend about ten grand. So I would say we need a mapping vehicle, and as far as the allocation, we gotta get that.
I agree.
Okay, she's driving her own vehicle and I don't.
Well, I move we approve the county administrator's recommendations.
Second, all favor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth.
And Eagleview is, this is the contract, I think, oh, look, it's Wes. Did you look at the Eagleview contract?
Yeah.
Okay, and you were good with it, this is the flyer where you guys have discussed, so.
Pick commentary.
Yeah, pick commentary, Eagleview, yeah.
Yeah, that, like Nina was talking about that, it worked with that also.
For dilated?
Yeah.
And the assessment office was the other.
And the nine-one-one center, fire.
All right, well, I move we approve the Eagleview contract, we've already discussed it.
Second, all favor.
Amy, I got to the end and the old thing where I made all my notes is in there, I'm like. All right, so there is nine thirty, is it nine thirty? You got two minutes. Before you discuss the full RFP, so you guys.
I looked at it.
You know, talking to my mom or were they?
So. Well, I mean, I, I mean, I've read, I've read this. Yeah. I mean. I mean, I've looked at them, so I mean. I mean, I've looked at him, so I mean.
It had the scope and everything.
Like what do you, where do you, the water slides were like about four.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Several classes.
Yeah.
I asked him if they liked splash pads and they were like, you know, maybe bring out. But but, you know, I have one from like age six.
Yeah.
And they were all like water slide.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that was their, like, I'm looking at this thing. Or lazy river, if it were for adults, I would say lazy river.
Yeah.
We take a break first, then.
Okay, alright.
We have the break scheduled next.
Yeah, we're gonna go ahead and take.
I call meeting back to order. The commissioners get a chance to look at everything?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve New River Engineering Incorporated.
And you just like their designs the best or so?
But it's not.
Profile the guys.
The profile, yeah. On this other company's information they sent. They left off a city, a zip code and a phone number. And if they can't get it right on this, what's gonna be their after details on the other? So therefore, I will second Tom's motion.
Own favor. Alright. I guess you want to take a break till eleven, ten o'clock now? Just the beautification.
We can do that. I mean, for the people who aren't gonna be kind. I think we can keep going and then just take a break.
And it's fine. I mean, I could, but. Who's gonna?
Oh, okay, are you ready for?
Yeah. I kinda zoned out myself, so.
These things haven't been moving along as quickly as I would like and that responsibility lies with me and in my office. Um, it's primarily a function of a lot of other stuff on my plate. It's also a function of us trying to learn as we go. Uh, but in any event, we met with, Wes and I met with Angela um on Monday. Anyway, it was earlier this week, I think it was Monday. So essentially, we more or less have a, I think we have a a better idea of how we need to deal with these things. So essentially, the the stage we're at and the four properties that are listed on the agenda, three of these um involve people who were served with the complaint issued by the county commission. They did not ask for a hearing and uh they've not done anything to remedy the problem. So essentially, at this point of the process, the county commission needs to issue uh an order um directing the property owners to comply. If they don't, and I have no reason to believe that they will at this point, then we have to file a civil suit in the circuit court. Now, one of these properties, a property owner um contacted my office. Um, it's the very first one, if I remember correctly, the one thirteen fifty two Scarborough Road. Property owner contacted my office and told me that he was planning on letting the property go for back taxes. I asked him if he'd be willing to sign the property over to us just to make things easier. He said, yeah, sure. We sent him a deed and as I kinda figured, he ignored it. Um, just out of an abundance of caution, I mailed him a deed again on Friday. Uh, but I'm not going to, um, I don't think we should wait for him to sign the deed. I think we just should proceed accordingly, using the ordinance and if um, this gentleman decides to go ahead and sign the um deed and get it to me, then we can proceed that way instead of filing a civil suit. Um, one of the properties on here, the very last one, the Mount Hall, five thirty six Mount Hall Branch Road. That was the one where the property owner came into the county commission meeting and agreed to cooperate with us. I don't have an order for that one because I didn't think we needed one, but Angela said for us to get reimbursed under the grant, we have to have order. So I'll have to, I have the orders for the first three properties. And then I should be able to get the order for the final property um prepared fairly quickly and then I'm gonna reach out to the property owner and ask her to come in to sign a promissory note deed of trust and then an agreement that gives us the ability to go on the property and and get things rolling.
So we just have to make, we have to, you know, ma- make a motion to
To issue.
An order to comply.
Yeah, basically, we need to issue an order directing that the property owners comply with the um directives in the complaint, which every one of the complaints was that they demolish the building and that they um dispose of it properly and also which assessed uh the fifty dollar per day fine. So the order, the way the ordinance is written, and this is something Wes and I have talked about amending it as we go. I mean, the way the, the way the ordinance is written, the property owners have to be given another thirty days to comply under this order. And then assuming they don't comply, at that point, we can file a civil suit. And uh, once we file the civil suit, we can get an order from the circuit court, giving us authorization to go on to the property. And then gives an order that also gives us, um, the eventual goal will be to not only get the order allowing us to go on the property and conduct the demolition. Um, it would be the goal to also before it's so overdone with, get a judgment against the property owner. And if we do that, that um, judgment will attach as a lien, not just to the subject property. It'll attach as a lien to any property the property owner has anywhere in Fayette County. Okay, so, so basically, we will get a lien on the subject property, but we're also the long term goal is to get a judgment against the property owner that soon as we record that, it it automatically attaches as a lien to any property this property owner holds title to in Fayette County. So it will give us additional avenues of trying to recoup this money. I mean, realistically, most of these properties are probably not going to be worth more than what it is going to take to demolish and dispose of the property. So we may get lien on the subject property. And then we're gonna turn around and sell it and recoup maybe half, two thirds of what we put into it. So with this approach and the code, the code provision that authorizes these ordinance specifically sets forth within the code provision that the lawsuit can be filed in circuit court under this particular statute and under this ordinance. You you can't just create causes of action. The legislature has to do that and they've done that for us in this instance. So we have, I think we have a process outlined at this point with Wes. And I have also enlisted the help of two of the assistants. Um, Sarah and Amy are gonna be helping Tyler. Um, I left Tyler out of the equation because his last day is um Thursday or Friday, so. Um, but once I get him replaced, um, we'll have five of us, we'll have five of us working with these. And again, I apologize, I meant this. It's not been, this has not been moving as quickly as I'm sure the commission would like. It's not been moving as quickly as I would like and I'm not gonna make excuses. Uh, I'm only gonna say that we're gonna do better and try to move these things along and hopefully with the, this first set of orders, we can get the ball rolling. And and who knows, the one property owner that said he was gonna sign the deed, I mean, the the letter I sent him on Friday was a little more strongly worded. Basically made it clear that, you know, you don't have to sign this, but we're still, we're we're still gonna do what we have to do. And you wanna make it easy and.
This can go easier, this can go hard.
Well, I I mean, the benefit to him, if he signs the property over, we're limited, we are limited to recovering the cost. If he signs the property, we are limited in recovering the cost of the demolition and disposal to the subject property itself. I mean, if these people just ignore us and we end up filing a civil suit in circuit court, at that point, we have a lot more. It it's a longer process, it's a lengthier process, it's gonna be more contentious process. But we also have the enhanced ability to get a lien against not just the subject property, but any property they. So I have orders for the first three properties on the list. Um, and these are ready for the commission to sign. And once these are signed, they need to be recorded um, with the county clerk's office and then um the county clerk needs to mail copies of these to uh the property owners. Um, but they have thirty days from the date that this is signed to to deal with it. My guess, I mean, none of these property owners have participated in the process thus far, so I don't really have any reason to believe that they're going to suddenly decide that, okay, now I'm gonna participate.
Do we have further action that we need to take once we take this action?
No, actually, once you guys sign the order, it's out of your hands and we will wait the thirty days and Angela will need to go over and check to make sure that the properties have not been um, the structures haven't been demolished and disposed of and assuming that is a no, then we file the civil suit. And it would be my hope to get, I mean, the the complaints are simply going to, the circuit court complaints are simply gonna mirror the complaints that we previously issued and it will give a little bit more information as to what happened since that was issued, since the complaint was issued and served on the property owner. And then I'd like to get the complaint filed. Um, and it's our thought process too. Um, they have to be given twenty days to answer the complaint pursuant to the rules of civil procedure. But we talked about as soon as we file the complaint, get a hearing scheduled for probably thirty days out. And if they don't um, respond to the complaint, I mean, either way, we should be in a position when we go in front of the circuit court to get an order giving us what we need. Now we'll have to go back on a later date. Once we find out what the final cost is to get the judgment. But the property, um, the order to demo and destroy and to give us authorization to go on the property should be issued by observing the words um at that first hearing. I mean, and part of the problem with the property owners is if they haven't participated up to this point, I I don't know what they're gonna be able to tell a circuit judge to convince them that.
They're now interested.
Well.
Mediating the property.
They're given notice when the enforcement agency first considers the complaint, they're given notice to appear at the county commission meeting when the commission considers the recommendation of the enforcement agency. They're then served with a complaint. And you know, this, this order will be their fourth opportunity to do something. And I I don't know what you're gonna be able to tell a circuit judge when we drag you into court and you've done nothing up to that point. I I'm now I'm uh, I'm not saying it's gonna be impossible. I just think it'd be very difficult for a property owner to convince a circuit judge that now all of a sudden we should give them some uh time and consideration to take steps to remediate the problem. But but we'll see. So I would tender these uh to the court, to the county commission, which is the court. And ask that uh, uh, the three commissioners uh sign these orders.
Okay, and do, do we wanna go ahead and approve the fourth order?
Yes, yeah, approve the fourth order pending submission for the commission's signatures. And that one's gonna be a little bit different since the property owner is um cooperating with us. She, that's the woman that came in and said she would be willing to sign the promissory note and the deed of trust and and we and we were gonna set a repayment plan for her to pay us back. Um, initially, we're just gonna have to do the agreement and the order. And then we'll have to get, obviously, we'll have to get bids to find out what this is gonna cost.
Okay. Alright, well.
I I got a question on that. Two questions on, after before other administration stuff we got with this, so. We could go serve the joint papers of faith in county forthright with that way and then once the court ordered them that and we, the, we is per se a levy on it or whatever, when we post it, because I still have all the speakers saying this is now in possession of the county. And then we can start arresting people and then with, they, we go through that process. I'm not sure, I'm not sure what you're asking. Once, once it runs through the courts, once we serve the papers, hey, that comes to this, like you said, manage.
I mean, there's, there's no provision that allows us to arrest.
Well, I I know that, but once, once it, I guess what I'm saying at what point does it come possession of the county to be demolished or whatever?
Well, then ownership of the property may never end up being hell about the county.
But the levy of it, when, with that purposes, we.
You're using the word levy. Do you mean lean?
Lean, but. No, no, but it's the levy sticker we put on it, that we have to go by on our purposes, saying this is house now leaning is.
There's nothing the sheriff's department has to do to perfect. Perfection of the lien is, is based on simply filing the appropriate paperwork in the clerk's office. Assuming we get a judgment from the circuit court, we take an abstract judgment, we report it with the county clerk at that point. As soon as that, that abstract is recorded, the lien attaches. But sheriff's department doesn't have to, sheriff's department's not involved in that at all.
Right, but I'm, I I guess I misunderstood then what the what the commission would try and do with some of these properties that are deemed to be safe and everything else. Is there, so there's never, there's never an order to evict John Redmond out of that house to be tore down or evicted by county?
I mean, it it up to this point, none of the properties. Are occupied.
Yeah.
Well, but she didn't live there when we considered.
Issue that is there are waters in that.
There are.
Okay, but yeah.
And actually, they're working on it right now.
Yeah. We gotta call another day.
They're gonna be in for a good awakening.
That's what I was.
The reality of the situation is this, if if we reach a point where we're in front of a circuit judge and we've determined that there are people living in the property, then I'll take the appropriate steps to deal with it in circuit court, get a court order. And I mean, I may need the sheriff's department to serve that order.
That's why I'll get.
Once it goes to the, to the circuit court, nothing can be done with the property, it cannot be demolished, cannot be.
No, it can.
Okay, but before the circuit court or after the circuit court? That's after the circuit court, correct?
Uh, Wes and I talked about this at length. And apparently, the way this was done in the past is the circuit court was left out of it entirely. And houses' structures were demolished based on the order issued by the county commission. That scares me to death. It scares me because we could go in. tear something down that appears to be dilapidated, run down and not worth anything, and then the property owner decides to turn around and sue us.
Right, so that's why I'm saying it has to go before anything's done.
It's.
It go before the circuit court.
Tom, to, to be clear, to be clear, the statute isn't clear.
So, but what you're saying to keep us from having problems.
He said, we don't have to, but we should.
I I understand that. I'm not saying not to. I'm just, I want to make sure that that's what I would want to do.
It's not.
To protect the commission.
It's not one hundred percent clear that you can proceed without a circuit court order, but it, it, the statute leaves, it appears to leave open that option, but but here's, but here's the thing, if we go and, if we go and, we go in front of a circuit judge and get an order, then property owner is going to have a virtual impossibility. It it's going to be virtually impossible for them to turn around and sue the county.
Right, then, right. That's what I was trying, that's why I was asking. I was asking protect, protect the commission.
Yes.
That, that I think should be done.
Going in front of a circuit judge, giving them the opportunity to come in and tell the circuit judge why they should or shouldn't issue the order gives a greater degree of legitimacy.
Right, some people may take a subpoena from the circuit court more seriously than.
Only thing it bothers.
An invitation to appear.
Now, I think should be, it's not, it's not done now. I mean, I, I mean, I I know this stuff needs to be done, but I think it should go through the right process, so you don't.
Well, I want to make sure, you know, I I I know our goal is to get these things, these dilapidated structures to take care. We want to get them taken care, we want them gone, but by the same token, I don't want to see us on the wrong end of the law, so claiming that we came with somebody's property and destroyed their house, and now they're accusing us of intentional.
Only place they had to live. I mean, I'm just, I'm just looking at the worst case scenario.
Yeah, and that, and that's the reality of the situation.
Seriously, I mean, you know, you got to look.
That's why I was asking, I should have flat out asked that way, because after the last commission meeting, there was some stuff done, and and I've already received phone calls. Take back this house, wait to fix it up and live in it, yada yada. I said, I ain't got nothing to do.
Well, and the reality, the reality is, is the overwhelming majority of these are not occupied, and I'm assuming this is the, the one in Scarborough.
Yeah, and the squatters have, they've already acquired two more houses.
Yes.
So they have their tents set up in the other houses.
Well, they don't have an ownership interest. And realistically, if they don't have the authorization, if they don't have the authorization of the property owner, they're trespass. So, you know, I'm going to take the position, I'm going to take the position that they're trespassers, and I'll ask for an important order directing the sheriff's department to help them move.
Cool.
And we may have to do that, but, but every single one of these properties except for the one in Scarborough up to this point is, is not occupied.
Right.
Well, I knew that we approved the orders for the three and the order for the fourth one as well.
Second, own favor.
You need our original signatures on the.
The original, one of the original signatures should be reported with the county clerks, and then we can get copies from the show.
So when you bring that other one, if you just let us know, we can come in and sign it.
So I have one more thing to add. So you guys know we have the grant for two hundred thousand, and expires on the thirteenth.
I knew it was going to hold that up.
So I did pre-bout people, I mean, since it's it's free, they had had like federal money. In order for us to request an extension, we have to show good faith that we've done something. So as soon as I get orders under the sentence order, I would like to know if I can go ahead and do have a, have a bid. Because you have to write the paper for two weeks, and then we give them time. Could we do that while we're going to the circuit? That way we show.
Um, I mean, the only problem is.
They would have to give a six month price for it. I mean, and and not me to step in and answer that, but to me, I think it puts the court through a horse.
Well, that would be the only thing. If we don't do that, then we may, we may not get the extension. That's.
Well, the court order wouldn't be enough, you don't think, to.
The lady yesterday said I needed to show bidding.
Well, I tell you what, in my opinion, I mean, Anthony's lawyer, if you get the bidding, even if it's for thirty days, you got, did get to bid.
I mean, i- if we have to rebid it, maybe it took, I mean, that would be something. I just didn't know if I could go ahead, these four houses, go ahead and do a package deal, get one contract to bid on a four, while we're waiting. But if not, I mean, we'll just.
If you have, I mean, there's nothing wrong with getting the bidding. It's just, we may.
Yeah, I think we should go ahead and 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 do that.
And I'll get a web hand.
That we authorize Andrew to see bids for these four.
Absolutely.
Somebody said.
Second, second, own favor.
And I'll let you know if it is the extension, but I did know that time would take him.
Yeah, yeah, anything to keep the process going. I mean, I understand, and even though it may not be worth, you know, only three months or whatever.
And most of those, you know, prices are going to change, and they're, a lot of the people are going to bid, they're working on, so they're behind, they're probably going to be four months, or they even get done anyway.
How many more orders do we have? I'm just asking, I'm looking at it there.
Twelve complaints.
I think.
Yeah, you guys have any orders coming up right now? I think there's twelve complaints that.
And those are, those are pretty much done at this point. You just need to get it served. I mean, of course, one of the problems with Avenue is.
Right.
I mean, got several of these where you know, and and I can only assume that people are walking into the commissioner's office, we're using the address that the commissioner has for tax.
Ain't fine, or they won't respond.
I mean, this is where we're actually sending some from a sheriff's department, maybe not necessarily Fayette County, but another county, or sometimes even out of state, and they give access and say, I went there, this person doesn't live there. And of course, you know, part of that you know, it's, it's, it's just the nature of being someone, you know, you may very well could be living there, and nobody wants to talk with the police. You know, really? If you don't say, I mean, you know, the law enforcement knocks on your door generally, it's not a good thing. So it's not uncommon for people to lie. No, they don't.
I'm not, Tom.
Oh, I don't know.
He is.
Exactly. Why they moved out. I mean, I actually, I had, I had a criminal case where sheriff's department, when I was in the system, the sheriff's department went there three or four times, and they said, they knocked on the door, and they could hear people inside moving around, and they would never answer the door. Because they, they knew why they were there, and they didn't want, they didn't want to get brought into the, the trial.
Do you want to take a break until?
Yeah, till ten thirty, yes. And I called meeting back to order. We're here to give a presentation to Dr. Stewart. I'm gonna let Ms. Taylor handle this. She gets through all the talk and stuff like this.
Well, I'm going to read the certificate. There really is very little we could do to adequately thank you for your service in this county. I mean, in all these years, just in the time I've been here with the COVID, the chemical spill, I mean, COVID, you know, you worked tirelessly during that and and showed leadership that comforted me even before I was on the commission. I, you know, you were out front dealing with it. So I knew that we were on it, you know, as a, as a civilian. Now that I'm in government, I've come to rely on your advice on, on lots of things, the chemical spill and other health issues we've had. We've talked about the opioid money and things like that, and I hope we can continue to rely on you for advice on how to go with that, but you know, having somebody as active as you have been and who has invested as much as you have in our community has been a blessing. And I know that there is nobody that I've told that you're leaving who hasn't lamented that seriously, and our only solace is that you're going to the next county over. That is it, that you're still, still close. So I wanted to read the certificate. We have a recognition of your service to the health and well-being of the citizens of Fayette County. We laud your professionalism, expertise, and leadership while guiding the county through the COVID nineteen pandemic, its ongoing drug epidemic and public health challenges such as Paint Creek chemical spill, all while tending to the community's daily health requirements, which in and of itself is no small feat. The programs you created will continue to contribute to the county's good health for years to come. Fayette County has been fortunate to have someone with your passion and dedication to serve it for so many years. We will miss you. And we got you again, and again, I'm saying this is very, but we got you some wind chimes. And there is an inscription that says, Dr. Anita Stewart, in recognition of your dedicated service to the health and well-being of the citizens of Fayette County, we will miss you, two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty-three. I'm going to put them back in their rocks.
You want all three of us?
Yeah.
My best, yeah. Yeah.
Post-it, I should have all that.
Let's go. Ready one box right now. Don't look around for us.
We didn't love each other. All right, Bill. Thank you so much. You're behind me good.
Well, I, I appreciate. Certainly, I honor the subject. Thank you, Don. Amy's. This notice maybe someone has no.
Thank you.
Yes. Did you see that?
All right, motion to adjourn.
That's it, check it.
All right.